Atwater City Council for March 12, 2018. At this time, if you'll please all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by invocation by Chaplain Mead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we thank you for gathering us in this hall today. We thank you especially for our council members, Father, that do the duties of this city. We thank you for their time and their effort to do what they think is right to get this city going in the right direction. We know that there are many challenges from days gone by, many challenges that will come up. We also thank you, Father, for our intercity manager, Father, we pray that you will guide him in his wisdom and his decision-making, your city attorney, Father, and all those that are leaders within this community in management positions or whatever position they may be in working within this city. Father, we thank you for our police officers and our firemen, and we pray that they will be safe today, safe this week, and that you'll just watch over them and guide them home, help them to make good decisions that will be best for this city. Father, we thank you for those that have gathered here in this hall, that are here to either watch or to speak out. We ask that all things will be done in decency and in order, Father, that all will understand that each one has its faults. We thank you, Father, and use this name.
Roll call, please. Creighton?
Here.
Raymond?
Here.
Viera?
Here.
Vineyard?
Present.
Price?
Here.
We have a quorum. Mayor or city attorney report out from closed session.
Mayor and council just report out that a direction was given to staff, but there was no reportable action taken.
We have no subsequent need items that have come to our attention, and so we move to approval of agenda as posted or as amended.
Question approved.
Second. Off the question. Viera?
Yes.
Vineyard?
Yes.
Creighton?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Motion passes. Ceremonial matters. Proclamation recognizing March 8, 2018, as International Women's Day and the month of March as Women's History Month.
Well, as we have sometimes done, we are past the date, but we have not forgotten about the proclamation. So with that, I will read this proclamation commemorating International Women's Day, whereas American women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and the strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways, whereas American women have played and continue to play critical economic, cultural, and social role in every sphere of the life of the nation by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside of the home. Whereas American women have played a unique role throughout the history of the nation by providing the majority of volunteer labor force of the nation. And whereas American women were particularly important in the establishment of early charitable philanthropic, love that word, and cultural institutions in our nation. And whereas American women of every race, class, and ethnic background served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement. And whereas American women have served our country courageously in the military. And whereas American women have been leaders not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolition, thank you, movement and why are all these big words, emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace movement, which create a more fair and just society for all. And whereas despite these contributions, the role of the American woman in history has been constantly overlooked and undervalued in the literature, teaching, and study of American history. Now therefore, I, James E. Price, Mayor of the City of Atwater, do hereby proclaim month of March as Women's History Month and March 8 as International Women's Day. In the City of Atwater, and called upon the people of Atwater to observe this day and consider these issues and celebrate all women. The proclamation is presented to the all, the American women who have in the past and will in the future contribute to our community and the nation. And I have signed that proclamation. Let it be recorded.
Presentations. Monthly report by Merced County District 3 Supervisor McDaniel.
The freshly tanned Mr. McDaniel.
Thank you. Yeah, freshly back from my first vacation since I was elected to office. An update today, Mr. Mayor, council. The county is currently accepting nominations for its 2018 Volunteer Recognition Program. This is an annual event where the Board of Supervisors recognize the outstanding works of community volunteers. Out of all the nominations received, two will be selected, independent screening panel to be recognized at the April 24 Board of Supervisors meeting. I wanted to announce a few of the past winners. 2017, it was Tim Dyke and Greg Olzak. In 2016, it was Richard Hawthorne and Dr. Reverend Don Ramsey. In 2015 was Joe Hofer and Gloria Perez. I think we all know those individuals because they are great volunteers. Also, the Modesto Vet Center will be honoring Vietnam veterans at the commemoration ceremony in Turlock on March 30. The ceremony is in part of an ongoing national effort to honor all Vietnam-era veteran military service members who were active duty between November 1, 1955, and May 15, 1975, regardless of where they served. These veterans are eligible to receive Vietnam Veteran lapel pins at the ceremony. Registration for this event will be held at the Merced County Veteran Services Office. Additional information, you can call 209-569-0713. And one day, I will bring our new VSO Veteran Service Officer to have him introduced here. He started last month. His name is Rakish Powell. We were a colleague together at Congressman Jeff Denham's office. He handled the veteran services for the congressman, and he is now our VSO here at Merced County. Also, I'd like to say the Merced County Human Services Agency, HSA, and the Atwater Elementary School District are proud to host the Second Annual Community Discovery Day. The event will take place from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. March 14 at Mitchell Senior Gym in Atwater. Community Discovery Day is sponsored by Atwater Elementary School District, HSA, and First Five to showcase local resources, employment opportunity, and services available in the community. The purpose of this event is to increase awareness for foster partnerships and connect families to local agencies and resources. For more information on that, you can reach out to Kamiko Vang at 385-3000 or Deanna Abram at 358-3741. And then I'd also like to recognize that we did have the Port of L.A. in the county last week. We met with a group of exporters. We had about eight of them. It went very well. The Port of L.A. is already trying to figure out how many trade loads we can get out of here on a daily basis. So we're getting trucks off the road, creating a shorter hauling space for truck drivers, and as well as taking a carbon footprint out of our air here in the valley. So are there any other questions?
Any other questions for Supervisor McDaniel? Okay. Thank you, Darren.
All right, thank you.
Love Atwater. Celebrating 10 years of volunteerism in the City of Atwater. An overview of projects and other achievements.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'm over here.
Hi, Larry.
I'm requesting that we continue this item to the next city council meeting. Gloria wasn't aware it was on the agenda, so she apologizes for not being here tonight.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item is introducing the law firm of Churchwell &amp; White and a brief overview of experience and other scope of work.
Well?
Mr. White.
Mayor, council, members of the public, thank you very much for, thank you for the honor of allowing me to be here. I'm gonna try to make sure that I warrant that 5-0 vote I got. And so, you know, with that, I figured that I would start the night by kind of doing some of the, taking action on some of the things that I heard at the end of the meeting, which is elevating the dialogue. And instead of talking about peripheral issues, which is what kind of happened with our interim agreement, talking really about, you know, what it is that our firm can bring to the city and the community and why I'm personally incredibly excited about this opportunity, which irrespective of the fact that the title says interim on it, I'm accepting as a, and treating it as if it's a permanent position and hope to earn your vote in the future in terms of making that so. So with that said, our firm is called Churchwell White, was founded by myself and a guy named Steve Churchwell, who's the former General Counsel of the Fair Political Practices Commission. So just right out of the gate, I met him when I was a law clerk working for him in law school. There's a bit of an age difference between us, but we stayed really good friends for a really long time. He has a better golf game than I do by a long shot, and that led to, you know, what happened just over five years ago when we formed Churchwell White. Churchwell White is, can y'all see that, or is it too? We're a government law firm, meaning that we represent both government entities and people who do business with the government on the private law side. So that's what kind of differentiates us, and it's why we're one of the fastest-growing law firms in the Sacramento region, but really in the state of California. When we started, there was only seven, eight of us, you know, with our law clerk who's accepted, assuming he passes the bar, we're gonna be at 22 attorneys and 10 staff members. So we've had fairly dramatic growth over the last five years, and I think we did it in the right way, which is a lot of hard work, people growing up organically, understanding our systems and how we do things. Well, I'll talk about it a little bit more when I go into there. But something that's very desirable about our firm is just it's where it's located. So how did a guy who was born in Modesto, kind of grew up in Los Banas, wind up in Sacramento? Well, I met my wife there, so that had something to do with it. But the bigger component to it was, you know, I came out of working in the Capitol for nearly a decade and lobbied for the California Bankers Association for a while, so I have that background. Met some really wonderful people during that time. It happens that your deputy city clerk is one of them, so we enjoyed that. But aside from that, we're located right next door to the League of California Cities. We're within a block and a half of the California Special District Association and as well as the California Association of Counties, and we're within a block and a half of the state Capitol. So when a lot of these laws come down or things are going on, we're right there in the thick of things to be able to help. The league just walks next door, calls us, and we can go do it. We wind up eating at the same restaurants. We wind up going in the same social circles. And I think that that advantage comes in terms of our ability to be really effective and keep Atwater kind of cutting edge in terms of what's going on. It's not something that you wait for a report a month or two down after it's already stale. We kind of know when it goes on at the same time. We were founded by four partners, no, I'm sorry, go back. Four partners, Steve Churchwell, who was at D.L.A. Piper, which is the largest law firm in the entire world, myself, who was at Greenberg Trig for a while in Santa Monica, and they were 11th in the United States, 15th in the world. Randy Pollock was with me. He was in Sacramento office. I was in the Santa Monica office. And then Barbara Brenner, who does water law and environmental law for us, who was at Stoll Reefs. So you're coming from some of the largest law firms and kind of bringing that ethos to public entity clients and kind of that expectation of how to do A-plus quality work. Our motto is that we always do A-plus every single time, within the time that y'all give us. So if you give us an hour to do something that should take a week, it's an A-plus within that hour. But it's A-plus every single time, and that's the standard, because even though we're human beings and can't be perfect, that's the standard that you expect from us. And our goal is also from a litigation standpoint to win all of the cases that we're supposed to win and a majority of the cases that we're not supposed to win. And that's an ethos and way in which we travel. As I said, right now, we're 21 attorneys. We're waiting to see what happens with our law clerk and whether or not he passes in the summer. But we're comprised of eight partners, three of council, and 10 attorneys who are in various levels of their career. In addition to that, we have two legislative advocates, which are also attorneys, that do nothing but go and lobby at the state, whether it's the legislature or at state regulatory agencies. In terms of staff, we have a firm administrator, two paralegals, a legal secretary, actually, that's a typo, but we have two legal secretaries. We just hired another one, one file clerk, one project assistant, a billing assistant, marketing coordinator, and a receptionist. And again, we're kind of centrally located in terms of where we do. In terms of the practice areas that we practice, I'm not gonna go through all of these things 'cause they're too, it would take too much time. But again, what you'll find is all of these things are government-focused, either representing folks in government or representing people who have issues before government entities. But I would say, you know, one of the things that we do much and most, and particularly myself and Tom Howland, is represent local cities and special districts. Oh, sorry. I told you to jump twice. I'm sorry, I can go back one, Julie. So in terms of public entity clients, like who have we represented? So this is a partial list. You know, essentially, all of these, for the most part, are active clients, so we don't just throw things on there. I'll note if there's not, if there's some exceptions. But I currently focus as city attorney for the cities of Dixon, Sonora, and Angels Camp. And like I said, I'm hoping to write in Atwater in that column pretty soon. As deputy city attorney, I'm for Riverbank, Oakdale, Series, and Patterson. I was up until recently Newman, but I wanted to give somebody else in our firm that opportunity 'cause I keep a little busy myself. So I've been at Atwater, so I've represented five of the nine cities in Stanislaus County, and I still do special counsel for all of them, including Newman. Currently, general counsel for Eldora Hills Community Service District, as well as San Miguel Community Service District, which is down in San Luis Obispo County. And so one of the unique things is when they had some difficulties with their general manager, for the three weeks I would agree to do it, they actually elevated me to the level of general manager in both functions, not 'cause I wanted to, but out of sheer kind of structural necessity. But I think the fact that they look to myself and our firm is that as a sign of great trust in how we kind of do things. And we're special counsel for a bunch of other ones, and again, these are just a few. So I want to talk about your team. Obviously, my name's Doug. I go by Doug, not Douglas, but Doug White, and I'm the founding partner. And my practice really focuses on representing local entities, particularly in the areas of real estate land use, municipal law, and I'll do litigation when I need to, although I try to avoid that if I can. I think, you know, one of the things that kind of personifies the way that I practice law is I'm very collaborative, and it's been, and I view myself as being part of a larger team, even though I'm a contract, I form a contract role. I view myself as an integral part of the team, so somebody who just wants somebody to be a scribe, I'm not probably their attorney. And I like to consider myself, because I like the challenge of it, as a thought leader within my profession. My goal is to create documents that other cities are coming to us to copy or replicate, or putting systems in place that other people want to replicate, as opposed to being somebody who just goes and, hey, they did it really well, we'll do it. I like the intellectual challenge of it. I like putting, you know, the clients kind of on the cutting edge, knowing all the risk and everything of that nature, and doing a really good job on it. I don't bluff, so if somebody in the audience hears me tell them something, I mean it. And that's just the way that I do business, and it's, I think, for my reputation that has led me here. Tom Howland, who serves as the deputy city attorney, has done his practice public law essentially his entire career, and he's done a stint previously with the city of Atwater, so there's some familiarity with there. And then Carrie Fuller, we always go in teams of three, but Carrie Fuller is an attorney with our firm. She'll be deputy city attorney, and again, she focuses on the environmental side and in particular, and water. So I'm really excited about the team. I think that particularly for Tom, who lives in Series and was born in Oakdale, and for me, who, you know, remembers going to Castle Air Force Base to take community college classes when I was in high school, it just forms a really exciting opportunity. I have so many connections to this community already. I know so many people here. I think that there's no bigger honor than being able to go back and work for the areas that you kind of identify as being home. And so despite the fact that our firm is based in Sacramento and where it's at, my heart has always been, I've always been a Valley boy. I will always be a Valley boy, and I have that background and that ethics and that, the thing that I think makes us special, that common sense that I think that I bring with me that only a place like, you know, Merced County and the valley, and I like the north part of the valley, makes me feel a little suspect, but no, that can bring. So I think we have a real, you know, common sense approach, and I bring that to the way I practice law. I just want to give you a sample of just some of the other attorneys in our firms. We're not on there just to save room, but these are some of our other attorneys. These are the partners and the of councils. And then on the next slide, we have our other attorneys who are associates, which means they're in their first 15 years of their career. You know, with that, you know, again, I just wanted to say thank you. I really appreciate this opportunity. Hopefully, it's a long-term opportunity, but for whatever time that I'm here, I just want to reassure the council and the public that you'll have, you'll get everything that I have, and if I'm not meeting that standard, then I hope that you come and tell me and hold me accountable, because I'm not afraid of having tough conversations and certainly not afraid of the truth. So with that, thank you all.
Any questions for Mr. White?
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item.
Comments from the public. At this time, any person may comment on any item which is not on the agenda. Please state your name and address for the record. Action will not be taken on an item that is not on the agenda. If it requires action, it will be referred to staff and/or placed on a future agenda. To comment on an item that is on the agenda, please wait until the item is read for consideration. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes.
And if I could, just before Mr. Johnson begins his comments, please, everyone, I give you this one admonishment. Please check your cell phones. We had a lot of difficulty with that the last time. Please put it on vibrator off. Okay? Thank you. Please.
Good evening, Mayor Price and City Council. Many people are concerned with the leadership coming from the city council. Right or wrong, most of your decisions come from the heart. I respect that. However, last council meeting, you showed the dark side of government, and it wasn't pretty to watch. It was a lesson on how to destroy the faith of Atwater citizens in you, and frankly, it was an embarrassment to all of us in the audience. You, Jim Price, made outrageous claims about Councilwoman Viera, and she loudly called you a liar. You were caught ready-handed. Weekly, you asked the city attorney if you were a liar. Mr. Turpstone didn't answer you. Jim, you should know if you're a liar or not. You claimed that I used an inappropriate word at a council meeting last year and had me removed, arrested, and assaulted by ex-chief Joseph, Sammy Joseph. It was the same words used by a fellow council member in a heated exchange. I want you to know, last Friday, the district attorney threw out all those charges. And once more, you lied and made untrue claims in the newspaper and called my wife a liar. Jim Price told yet another lie in the newspaper, saying, "We tried to pay our water bill in cash," then left out to get our cash from our vehicle and never came back. That was, that was a total lie, and you know it. Mr. Price, you have shown you can't get along with the council. More importantly, you've shown you can't get along with the truth. You are unfit to be mayor. Come November, you will be back to pumping gas full-time. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's George Logan. I was the city attorney of this organization for about a quarter of a century. I know most of you through friends or relatives or whatever. Andy Kodek was on the city council when I left, might know him. Anyway, I'm here on behalf of the Atwater VFW. We're a local service organization. We support the Girl Scouts, police cadets, disabled veterans, and other Gold Star Wives and other organizations. We also provide a community hall for a community events, and we're having our annual big fundraiser on the 17th of March. It's Saint Patrick's Day, and I know some of you may have plans to go somewhere else for that day, but you won't be there all day. You can either have lunch or dinner in one place and lunch or dinner in the other, or you can come down, our bar will be open, have a drink, meet some of your constituents down there. And we'll be open from 11 to 7, so we'll be there from lunch and dinner. And Brian, I remember your dad, we used to go around and around a few times. And Cindy, I know you, you know Andy and I know Mr. Creighton, and I don't know if the mayor remembers me, but we had a run-in out there with the Castle Air Force Base. Anyway, come on down. I'm inviting you to come on down to the Atwater VFW, and we'll see that you get a good dinner and lots of handshaking, okay?
Fifth and Broadway, right? Fifth Street and Broadway.
Fifth and Broadway, right. Come on down.
Thank you, George. Nice seeing you again.
Hello, my name is Rosa Johnson. I'm from Atwater. I've been a resident here for about 10 years. This is my first time meeting any of you and seeing you for the first time. I'm sorry that I had to come here, but what I need to find out is what is going on with the memorial benches? I have been trying to find out since January, and I cannot find who I'm supposed to talk to to get one. That's the only way that I'm going to be able to get closure. I'm trying to finalize memorial services for my very dear friend. So please take my number and call me, 510-499-3738.
I think our city manager will answer that for you real quick.
Thank you very much.
Ma'am, can I get, can I get you to repeat that number, please?
My number is 510-499-3738.
Got it. Thank you so much.
Yeah, hi, it's, my name is Harpreet Singh. I belong to Modesto area, but still, I think I feel Atwater is also my community. So today, I came to invite all the council member and people of Atwater for Sick American Awareness Event. So this is our sixth annual Sick American Awareness Event. So we basically try to spread out the word about the community, and this year, we have a topic about Sikh and Hispanic community bonds. So we would like your attendance, and especially, I think, Mr. Art, he is much more familiar with the event, and also would ask our supervisor to be there. So I would just give the invitation to the secretary, and so whoever is interested, I think we would appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, would you like the dates and times?
Certainly.
For the record, the date is Friday, April 6, 2018. We'll begin at 11:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. at the Series Community Center, 2701 Fourth Street, Series, California. For information, you may call 209-740-7443.
Anyone else wishing to address the council?
Good evening, council members. My name is Lori Johnson. Good evening, council members. My name is Lori Johnson. I live at 1675 Drakeley Avenue. Tonight, I would like to talk about a great injustice regarding the so-called reporters and the truth. I have taken a few journalism classes, and I know that to print hearsay is a deliberate attempt to show that you are not out to report the truth. And what happened to getting both sides of the story? In this case, it doesn't even involve any type of investigation. Just listen to the YouTube video of that council meeting, and you will see that I am not the liar here. The true liar here is you, Mayor Jim Price.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Kyle Lardo with Republic Services, a city's trash and recycling company. I just want to come in to notify you that in an earlier meeting I had with Councilman Vineyard and Brian from your Public Works Department, we came to the decision that due to inclement weather, they were going to be canceling the spring cleanup for this Saturday. The lot that we use, with the heavy rains coming over the week, just make it almost impossible for us to do the job properly. We are going to be moving the date to May 19th. So in a couple of months, we will rehold this again. We've made some backup plans for that date, so it will go forward on May 19th. If you have any questions, please feel free to give me a call, or you can contact Brian in Public Works.
Anyone else wishing to address the council at this time?
Hello, Adam Reed, 1520 Fruitland Avenue. I live on Fruitland Avenue. That's just stated. My house fronts Fruitland, and Fruitland's become very, a lot of speeders, a lot of traffic on it. It's been a problem for a couple, for years, but it's increased over the last few years. And the road's in poor condition, as we all know. We've got plans, obviously, move forward and fix that. But we, I think we have a lack of enforcement for the speed laws. We have a speed study that we passed two, I think, two years ago. So we've got an adopted speed study. I talked to Sam Joseph before, a few months ago, and he said that they weren't able to go out there in sight because we didn't have a speed study. So I provided him that information. I still haven't been seeing any enforcement out there. So I'm asking that you guys would please enforce, come out there and enforce the speed laws. Speed limit's 30 miles an hour. We get cars through that are constantly going 35, 40, 50 miles an hour. My son's been hit once, and there's a police report on that. Officer Duncan came out and took it a couple of years ago. We constantly are having, this last weekend, he was out playing basketball, and his ball rolled out in the road very slowly, and a car came by and hit it and popped it. Didn't stop, just kept going at about 50 miles an hour. It's a constant problem. They're speeding. The road's in poor condition. They shouldn't, I don't know why they want to go that fast. A couple of weeks ago, you guys had a claim for a tire on Fruitland, and I'm, you know, there's potholes. We don't need to be going that fast. It's in poor condition. The second thing is, maybe we could look into, most cities have policies set in place for traffic calming. City of Turlock does, Modesto does, a lot of cities do. Maybe we need policies in place so that if the speed enforcement doesn't work, speed enforcement works great if they're out there continually putting pressure on them, and people know, it's always the same people going back and forth down the road. So if they know that there's a police presence out there, they're going to slow down. But there are other traffic calming measures if that doesn't work, but we need some sort of policy so that the residents know how we can go about asking for that and what it takes. So, thank you.
I see the police chief taking thorough notes, so I know that there will be follow-up on that. You said your name and your phone number a little more quicker than I could.
Oh, it's Adam Reed. My number is (628) 0729.
And if you'll make the time, then Public Works Director and I will meet with you and we'll talk about the condition of the road.
Yeah.
And there are such things as the speed trailer, et cetera. We'll meet with you either this week or early next week.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Adam, just to let you know also, in the design work that has been done for correcting all of Fruitland, where the stop signs are located, that area right there is programmed to be like a roundabout right there.
Yeah.
And the reason being is, like you said, right, it's a slowing type of mechanism right there. We've got, you know, it's all been put into the design and everything.
Yeah. It's going to take the, there's, you know, it's a, what, $4 million project?
Yeah.
So it's going to take time, obviously, to get there. So if we could start implementing other things like speed enforcement.
You're correct. And also, as I've noted down there on the west end, where the road is just virtually impassable, almost right there on the curb. So we're acutely aware of it.
Yeah. I just want to keep it, keep it on your guys' mind. But I am, besides being on your mind, I am asking that you guys look, do something about speeding.
Certainly.
Yeah. Because there's no, the sidewalks are poor and lacking. The rideaway is inadequate. We, a lot of kids, go sit down there after school from 2:30 to 3 o'clock. There's 20, 30, 40 kids that go back and forth down that street. So it's unsafe.
It is.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else wishing to address the council? Okay. Next agenda.
Consent calendar. Background information has been provided on all matters listed under the consent calendar, and these items are considered to be routine. All items under the consent calendar are normally approved by one motion. If discussion is requested on any item, that item will be removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Ms. Viera?
Yes, I'd like to pull nine and 12, please.
Nine and 12. Okay. And could we also pull item six? Are there any items on the consent calendar that any member of the audience would like to be pulled for separate consideration? Okay. Hearing none, entertain a motion for the remainder. Mr. Vineyard?
Motion to approve the remainder of the consent calendar?
A second.
Off the question.
Creighton?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Vineyard?
Yes.
Viera?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number six, fire protection services for fiscal year 2017, 2018 through fiscal year 2020, 2021.
Chief White? Oh, go ahead.
I'll do the initial presentation. Yeah, Justin will fill in as needed. Situation with the fire contract is that it is presently eight months in arrears. So we've been operating without a contract, yet Cal Fire has continued providing services. The services that they're providing is based on what they had proposed as a contract for the current year. So the costs associated with the present, what's being proposed, and what we have actually been receiving in terms of services, it's actually an increase over the previous year. But at this time, we have a de facto contract in place because these eight months have gone by without the contract. One of the key issues for me, hence the city, is that we needed to make sure there was flexibility in the staffing, because here at the end of the month, council will have to consider a list of options on how to basically save the budget. And it's been made clear in the contract that we can propose reductions in staffing with a 120-day advance notice. And if the city wanted to actually cancel its services with Cal Fire entirely, that would require a one-year notice. Now, having said that, pretty much across the board, everybody I've talked to views Cal Fire as being a premier deliverer of services. Their professionalism is unparalleled. The responsiveness, the nature of their services, the how they keep up with training, how they manage the condition of the equipment, I have nothing but good things to say about it. For those of you who don't know it, I have 24 years of fire experience myself as a fire chief, so I think I'm relatively qualified to comment on it. At the same time, we do have a budget situation that is approaching the crisis level, and it is for that reason that we had to ensure that there was some flexibility to be had with staffing in case we need to cut back on associated expenses. I don't have any other details that I was planning to share, ready for questions.
When you say staffing levels, are you talking about the possibilities of browning out a station?
No. What you will see in the upcoming report is, at this time, the most likely position affected would be that second battalion chief. It's not recommended, but when we have to make tough decisions, things like that have to be considered. There's actually one half of a position included in the, in the contract that we've been paying for as well, and that would be subject to discussion. But it is premature for any conclusions to be drawn about any potential cuts in fire. But I wanted to point out that the contract does have some flexibility, and it was widely held as a belief that we were absolutely locked in and had no flexibility. Yet, with other city departments and services, of course, there would, there was that sense of greater vulnerability. But hopefully, we can avoid anything like that. But it will be on the table at the end of this month, and we have our council study session to discuss the future of the city's budget.
Okay. Chief White, do you have anything to add?
Just like Chief Corprich has said in the, in the last council meeting, and Chief Lawson, the city of Atwater pays the actuals. So what's on the contract is, is the top step, the highest dollar amount that that's possible. So with the staff that we have working in the city for the contracts, the end results in the fiscal year is you, the city of Atwater, pays the actual budget. So being two quarters into it right now, we're, we're under budget for our 17, 18 fiscal year contract. So I just wanted to point that out, that the city's only paying the actuals, not what the budget, or not what the contract proposes.
Okay. I want to also note that council members were able to meet with you and Chief Lawson to discuss the contract and items of concern that we had and all that. And we appreciate that dialogue that we had there, and I think that your openness and your flexibility in the contract and how it's going is, it's deeply appreciated. You know, to provide services is not a cheap deal, and rearing the Cal Firs ugly head, it's also, you know, involved with you guys just as much as it is with our city staff. So there's a lot of challenges to making this work, but it's, it's appreciated. And, you know, some of the things, I want to just let the public know, some of the things that are particular interest to me, and a concern actually, is, and we touched on this, was the medical calls. Your percentages for medical calls got to be in the 90s, I would think.
Oh, you got me off. It was in the, in the chart for the accomplishments, but I want to say we're like 78%.
Okay.
Somewhere around there for EMS services.
Okay. In any case, you know, a lot of that, you know, and we shared a lot of war stories from my EMS days and all that. And the thing of it is, is that, you know, the fire department is, is rolling on a lot of these calls, especially those that, you know, when people call and say, "I'm having difficulty breathing," and you get out there and you find out that it's, you know, somebody's had the flu for the last couple of days, and, you know, that type of thing. Yeah, you know, okay. But, you know, let's, let's, you know, let's be honest. You know, we don't want to abuse the fire department or any services, the police or the fire guys, strictly for the fact that if we have a true time emergency, we don't want them tied up someplace else that, you know, really, they didn't need to be to in the first place. And, you know, I recognize that, and I'm still going to make my comments known to the MCC, EMCC meeting next time it comes around, because it seems like it's not getting better, and we've got some challenges with that. So, but anyway, we appreciate your comments to that.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Vineyard?
Yeah, I also want the public to understand, when he's talking about, we pay the actual costs. If the budget's 2.7, and at the end of the year, this contract's a not-to-exceed. So at the end of the year, say Cal Fire's expended $3 million, they eat the $300,000 they go over, the 2.7 budget. They can't exceed the 2.7, or they eat that. They have to take it out of their own budget. So they can't ever go over that, that amount. And usually, they, they come under anywhere from $250,000 to $400,000 in the last few years. So that's, that's a really neat thing to have in there for the city, because it prevents them from coming back and saying, "Hey, we messed up. We over-expended. Sorry." Yeah, sorry, because they have to pay for that extra. And I don't ever see that happening. I do want to, within the next year though, still see that comparison, because enough people have asked for it over the years, complained about it, have said, "We need our own fire department." I'd still like to see that comparison of what it would cost us, so you folks have an idea of what it would cost for us to go back to our own fire department, should we ever decide to do that. So if we can possibly work with you to do that in the next year and have that done, I would think that would be really neat to do.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Next item.
That was actually an action item.
Oh, well, I was going to.
Motion to approve. Second.
Are there any members of the audience who wish to comment to the fire contract? Okay.
All right. Calling for the question, Raymond?
Yes.
Creighton?
Yes.
Vineyard?
Yes.
Viera?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next item is an informational item only. No action is required. Police Department activities and projects for the month of February 2018.
Sorry about that. Good evening. First off, Mr. Reed, thank you for bringing that to my attention. Was not aware of that, that issue that you had previously mentioned. I'll make sure that we look into that and see if we can get an officer to conduct some traffic enforcement in that area. So thank you for bringing that to my attention, first off. Wanted to go over a couple of the items that we've been working on here in the last month or so in regards to some cost-saving measures for the department. We have changed the shift schedule for our deployment. We're hoping that by doing so, that will alleviate some, some of the overtime due to manpower issues. So we are currently underway with that shift change that just took place about a week ago now. Along with that, we're also looking into bringing the working loop program back into the city. For those of you that are not aware of that program, that allows individuals to essentially perform their community service as a result of an arrest or conviction for a minor crime. What that will do is allow an individual to come into the city, assigned to an officer at the department. That individual can be responsible for handling some tasks around the agency, such as the possibility of maintenance to the vehicles in regards to the cleanliness and washing them and cleaning them out. That will eliminate the need for an officer to utilize local car wash company and try and eliminate some costs for the city as well. And also to alleviate some of the burden that's put on by Public Works in regards to some minor housekeeping issues, if you will, at the department. So we are looking at bringing some of those programs back to the department to try and curtail some expenses to the city as a whole. In regards to some of the notable incidences from the previous month, one of which In regards to some of the notable incidences from the previous month, one of which I'd like to, I know council received the report on the 5th of February at approximately three minutes after midnight. Officer Smith was on patrol in the northeast area of Atwater, in the area of Buick and East Bellevue, when he heard shots fired and observed two trucks traveling at a high rate of speed on Buick Road. He indicated that appeared that one truck was in pursuit of the other. After notifying dispatch, Officer Smith initiated a traffic stop on the pursued vehicle, which was a Nissan pickup. The other vehicle in question was a black Ford F-150. Officer Smith was informed that the driver in the Nissan truck had shot at them. During the investigation and search of the Nissan revealed the spent casing. Officer then inspected the Ford and found that it had a bullet strike to the rear passenger door. Subsequent to that investigation, there was an arrest that was made, and the officers did an excellent job of backtracking the route that the vehicles had taken, resulting in the recovery of a firearm in that particular incident. So that was a job well done by the officers and supervisor working that particular evening. Also, on the 19th, Officer Lee took a stolen vehicle report of a 98 Honda Civic. The following day, Officer Lee located a vehicle in the roadway that was similar to the one that was reported stolen. He was able to position his vehicle behind it, confirm that in fact it was the vehicle in question. He followed the vehicle to the Target Shopping Center, where he was able to set up on the vehicle while awaiting assisting units. Officer Lee was able to detain three subjects at the scene, with one of the occupants, a adult female, taken into custody and booked into jail. Again, an excellent job by officers, being aware of their surroundings. In this particular case, the officer, having taken the report the previous day, and being vigilant enough to be able to locate that vehicle the following day, followed the vehicle while awaiting assisting units, did not result in a vehicle pursuit, as which is most common, one of the most dangerous things that we in law enforcement can get into when we're chasing an individual on a vehicle. Waited for the vehicle to come to a stop, and was essentially affected the arrest with nobody being injured, no property damage, and the victim being able to retrieve their vehicle the following day.
Any questions or comments? Okay.
Our next item is water well levels for the month of February 2018, and water well levels for calendar year 2017.
The mayor, council, was there a question on the levels?
No, I was just, do you have comparisons for, I know that we're low on rain this year, so I was just wondering, are we lower than last year, or do you have any kind of comparisons?
That's why, if you look at the top scale, that's, the top one is 2017, that was last year, and the bottom one is this year.
Okay.
Do you not have it?
It might be in here.
Yeah, I do, I do the previous year and this year, so you can compare and see. There's some wells are a little bit lower, but some of them are a little bit higher.
Okay. So just over general, we're about the same?
Pretty much, yes.
Okay. I know we've just had less rain this year than last year, so.
Yeah. As long as we stay like this, we should be all right through the year.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Gray.
Brian, just give a little simpler overview instead of detail on the wells, kind of paint a picture where we're at. The projected rainfall is normal or below normal, and we still have the watering restrictions in place. Go into some of the details on that stuff.
Yeah, we haven't changed our watering schedules. Still, it's two days a week. The hours is still five to, five to seven, I believe it is still.
Ten.
Yeah, hopefully, we have the volunteers still going out doing red tags for water wasters. And I've seen already, I mean, it's supposed to rain tonight and tomorrow, and I saw people watering today. So it's like we need to get it out there that, you know, we aren't out of drought yet. Even though the governor did say we are out of drought, it's still gonna be another four or five years if we get a good winter. So just let everybody know, we still need to conserve water as much as we can.
So with our water conservation plan, what are we doing citywide this year, different from last year?
It's gonna be the same as we did last year. It's just the same restrictions. We haven't changed anything.
Okay.
Yeah, I think you bring up a valid point. Looking at the weather reports for this week, we're supposed to see like five days of rain beginning, I think, in late evening tonight. But even at that, you know, this is often on rain, you know, our recharging is the big deal. And to recharge our aquifer is, it's a tough thing to do. And as you stated, we have not eliminated the ordinance that is on water restriction. And yes, a lot of people around town are still under the assumption that once the governor, you know, pulled the restriction, that that was the end of it, and it's not. We still have our local one in place, and, you know, as long as our water levels are still remaining somewhat good, that is how we do it. We have to, we have to think about that. And when, you know, we talk about the enforcement of it, I know Greg Olzak has been very proactive in that, and as has Councilmember Vineyard, in that they've been taking a look at, you know, abusers throughout the city. You know, letting the water run down the street and all that kind of stuff, that's not the stuff that we need to do. You know, we need to really be cognizant of the fact that we are still in a time when water is very precious to us, so we need to be very cognizant of that. Okay. All right. Anything else? Okay.
Interim City Manager Reports and Updates. Introduce newly appointed Citizens Oversight Committee Public Safety Transactions and Use Tax Member, George R. Pertle.
So with the passage of the ordinance that created the public safety tax, there was also a requirement to have a public safety committee, which is a citizen oversight group to ensure that what was promised to the public is in fact being delivered. This committee is supposed to meet twice a year, and for any number of reasons, the city is a bit tardy on holding those meetings, but we're catching up. There was, it's supposed to be, there are supposed to be seven committee members. And we recently started reactivating that group, making sure that the people who were still on the committee still intended to continue on with it. And then we also posted for new members, so that we could go from basically five members, Lisa?
Yes.
Five to seven. So we only got, we only have one committee member to add tonight. And before I present and introduce this new member, I want to make a comment about the appropriateness or lack thereof of having the city manager appoint community members to a committee that serves a political purpose. So I think this should be the last time that a city manager makes an appointment of this nature, although I lucked out, because the person who I will introduce here in a moment brings an incredible amount of talent to the table. But I am going to urge the council at some appropriate time to consider taking the appointments of committee members for this, for Measure H. Take that back into your arena, not allow some city manager to make these kinds of decisions for you. But again, I think we lucked out this time. And Mr. George Pertle, who is sitting there, do you want to stand up? We're very fortunate to have you. This person has 18 years of being a police officer. He's been very active in his, I assume, we talked about you being, you're semi-retired, right?
Come up to the podium. Yeah, semi-retired.
Semi-retired.
In fact, I just started, I'll just start, I just started working for Merced College, working as an instructor. I'll be teaching out at the Churchill Prison.
So he has a master's in public administration, a bachelor's degree in anthropology, 18 years as a police officer, president of the Atwater Friends of the Library, chairman of the Merced College Board Oversight Committee, and District 3 Commissioner of the County of Merced, excuse me, Library Advisory Board. He's been a licensed PI, private investigator, for 13 years. He also worked as a licensed stockbroker. So this man brings to the table the finance component, the government component, the public safety awareness and experience, and I kind of wonder why you're not a city manager, but that's all. Or were you too smart to turn down the job? In any event, I don't know if you want to make some comments, but, you know, and Lisa and I, and it turns out that Lisa knows you from many years ago, we were just shocked at what a resume you have, and that you're willing to provide your assistance on a volunteer basis. So we're kind of hoping you might want to reach into other aspects of how this local government runs, so.
Sure. I'm just flattered to be allowed to be a part of the process. I've just became on the advisory board. Darren got me on that, and I do appreciate that. And I've been in contact with Amy over that. And it's just, I just believe, I've been a part of the community in Merced. I worked with Armando at Merced Police Department for years, and also, living in Atwater now 11 years, and chose, my wife and I, who is now a dean at Merced College, we've chosen Atwater to be our home, and plan to retire here. And so the idea is that, you know, when you reach a certain age, certain amount of experience and so forth, it's time to give a little of that back to the community. Merced's been good to me, Atwater's been good to me, and like I said, I made this place my home. So I'm flattered to be a part of the team and to be on board.
Well, thank you so much for making some time, if you have any. What are your hobbies?
You've got some of those, too.
Yeah, right. Yeah, thank you for, you know, dedicating some time to our city here for the Oversight Committee. It's an important position. I sat on it once myself, and it's very informative, so.
I know it is.
We appreciate it.
Thank you for having me on board.
Mr. Gray.
Thank you very much for volunteering, and if you have any colleagues that aren't doing anything, we're still short one. We'd love to have more people like you on a committee, and we're looking for diverse people, and people that are retired are a great asset. You guys have seen things in the past, and you have a lot to contribute, and you have a relationship with some people here, so that's gonna be a great transition.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. I have one request from Mr. Dwork here. This is an item of information that will, you know, be well-known throughout the public here soon, but in any case, Mr. Dwork.
Well, earlier today, on the instruction of the city council, I made a news release to inform the public of a development with our water system, which is involving a chemical compound called 123 tri-chloro-propane. And the council wanted me to inform the community as a matter of transparency. This is a serious issue, but it is a manageable one, and it's gonna take me a couple of minutes to explain this to you. This chemical has been widely used from around the 1950s through the 1990s and maybe beyond. And we have known about it for at least a few years, probably a decade or more, but there was never a state standard that regulated, for example, you know, other chemicals that leach into the, our water system. Those things are pretty much all covered, but this particular chemical didn't become codified or, you know, something that the state actually tracks until January 1 of 2018. So the city got notice that as of April 1, in all likelihood, we will get a notice saying, "Hey, you've got more of this chemical than is permitted by our state standards." So it's a, it's an unusual chemical, because the, typically, when there's a chemical detected in the water system, it gets measured in parts per million or parts per thousand. This one is measured in parts per trillion. So anything above five parts per trillion becomes a safe standard issue. So the city is dealing with this. The city has 10 wells. Nine of our wells contain this chemical. In fact, there are 103 water systems, ranging from Manteca all the way to Bakersfield. So this is a widely, this is, this affects, basically affects about a million people. So we're just one of 103, and it's not all communities, because there are water systems that don't necessarily serve municipal governments, but it's a huge problem. It's Dow Chemical and Shell that produced this particular chemical. It was used widely as an agricultural application. Of course, it's outlawed now. And by the way, for the last, Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, but for at least the last year or so, we have been listing the presence of this particular chemical in our websites under the Community Confidence Reports. Is that correct?
Yes, it's under the Unregulated Chemicals.
But now it is a regulated chemical. The city entered into a lawsuit. We're represented with an attorney. We're seeking $77 million to address the infrastructure that's needed to filter this particular chemical. There's an interesting comment here that, you know, on one hand, I think I'm, by the way I'm talking, maybe I'm raising more alarm than is warranted, but let me find this one sentence here. "The five parts per trillion standard for TCP is intended to assure that if you drink water containing TCP for a lifetime, which is listed here, 70 years, there will be only one additional cancer case in the population of 1 million." So I hope that that offsets some of your initial concern. Nevertheless, if the state declares that this is a health hazard, then of course, we want to take care of it. The attorney representing our city has never lost a case, and I don't recall the number, Paul, do you, do you remember? He's handled numerous cases like this.
13.
13 cases where they're in, where it involves lawsuits. I think Livingston also, in fact, I know that Livingston had a similar situation, and they settled with Dow and Shell. But we have more wells, and some of our wells are more contaminated than others, but this is the kind of thing that legitimately raises alarm. None of your city leaders are gonna tell you that everything's great. It's a highly, it's a high priority imperative to address these problems, and it is possible to get 100% clean water that's free of this tri-chloro-propane, and it's done with carbon filters. And I think those filters each use about a ton of.
20,000 pounds of.
20,000.
20,000 pounds of activated carbon to remove it.
But there's costs for the acquisition of those filters, and then generally, around every four months, they have to be completely recycled, depending on the concentration of this particular chemical, so. So we release this information today to all the school districts, to the, to local print newspapers, and the council thought it would be a good idea if I spoke about this in a public setting. So no cause for alarm, but it is something you need to be aware of. And again, in the interest of transparency, that's why we're talking about it.
Yeah, I've been aware of this for the last two and a half years. I've been involved with the attorneys doing our litigation, and... been, uh, involved with the attorneys doing our litigation, and, uh, Livingston and also the city of Clovis, uh, were, um, the last two cities that are legal representation, um, won, uh, favorable, um, judgments on. So we feel confident that, uh, we are going to also prevail in this. Um, and just kinda hitchhike on what Art was talking about as far as the, uh, chemical itself. Uh, TCP is a chemical that, uh, was used as far back as the forties, was injected into the ground as an agricultural type of a, a chemical, uh, and it was designed to go after nematodes, for those to know what nematodes are, uh, and to eliminate them, and it does a real good job at doing that. But it doesn't do anything for the water table and that type of thing. Um, Shell is the ones that manufactured it, and Shell, uh, even at one point, to try to get rid of it, because they have so much of it still, uh, is that they included it in, um, their gasoline that they, uh, pump into your cars. If you recall, some time ago, Shell with the additive TCP, remember those commercials, possibly? In any case, um, that was put into the cars. Unfortunately, it won't burn, so what it was doing was ruining engines. So, um, it was discontinued as an additive in gasoline, and, um, so we are now at the point where we were at. So what we're gonna do is, uh, let people know here that we have, uh, you know, it's, we're, we're on top of this, uh, the filtration and all of that is what will be needed to, uh, help to mitigate this, and, um, we'll be giving you updates, uh, as we go through the legal process and let you know what's going on. Okay? All right. Next item.
Reports and presentations from staff. Verbal report regarding PG&E LED streetlight upgrades.
Mayor and City Council, in July of two thousand seventeen, the City Council approved an LED streetlight turnkey replacement project, and, um, PG&E had already come into the city, replaced all of their own, um, owned streetlights with LED, or LSD, two, um, LED street, or lights. In, um, July, we, uh, approved a project to replace all city-owned streetlights with LED, um, streetlights. These lights are energy efficient, cost-saving, reliability, um, they have improved safety, along with bringing a reduction to the carbon, uh, carbon footprint to the city. Just wanted to let you know that, uh, PG&E came in, uh, made these revisions to five hundred and three streetlights without any interruption or disruption to electric services to the citizens, and this project was done safely and quickly, and has now been completed. With that, we're able to now, um, qualify for older, higher rebate level with these new streetlights.
Perfect. Yeah, I, it was great. On our street, I love it. Any case, uh, any council questions for Ms. Waterman?
Great job.
Yeah, it was a good deal. Okay. If there are no further questions?
Um, Mayor, I'm sorry, Brian just brought another point to us. If anybody complains that they did not get the new LED streetlights, that's probably because they're an MID-owned streetlight. All the PG&E streetlights, as well as city-owned streetlights, have been converted.
Very good.
So the question is, what's the timeframe on LED, uh, MID for the LED?
I guess we can contact MID, but that's not, that wasn't in the, this original project, but we can contact MID and see if there's something.
If they had a program or something?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay. Next item.
Verbal report regarding twenty eighteen year-to-date financial update.
Good evening, uh, Mayor and City Council members. We are here, uh, to present, uh, fiscal year, fiscal year seventeen eighteen, um, year-to-date numbers, basically. Um, as you can see for, um, there was a handout left on your, um, chair. So for, um, the summary sheet is for the general fund. As you can see, for property taxes, um, we have collected about fifty-two percent of the, um, projected amount. Um, first payment to be received in January, so the second payment of property taxes should be coming in, in, uh, May. So as we go along, sales tax, we collected about forty-five percent of, uh, projected amount. Business licenses, we, um, we collected eighty-five percent so far. And, uh, just, I'm just going over the, uh, major items. So for, uh, service charges, we have collected about fifty-one percent so far. So overall bottom number, we have collected forty-five point two percent of our total projected revenue for the general fund. Uh, the middle section is the expenditures by department for general fund. As you can see, all the departments are operating within their budgeted amounts, uh, so far. Um, so overall, we have incurred forty point, forty-five point six percent of our projected, um, expenditures. After the mid-year adjustments, we do have a surplus of one hundred and forty-eight thousand dollar, and so far, year-to-date, we have a surplus of twenty-one thousand dollar, um, in surplus. Um, just a correction, like always, I mentioned, expenditures are continuous, but revenue we proj, uh, receive kind of in lags of months, too. So property tax, there is only two times a year, then sales tax is, uh, usually three months lag. Um, next two pages are basically, uh, breakdown of that summary page by each category. Then the last page is, uh, for the other funds, which includes three enterprise funds and a major H. Sorry, the last page. So for, uh, water enterprise fund, we projected our revenue to be four point one million, and so far, we have collected three point two. For expenditures, we projected four million, and so far, we incurred one point, uh, six million, and we are projecting to have a surplus of hundred and eleven thousand for water, uh, enterprise fund. For sewer, we projected our revenue to be thirteen million. So far, we have incurred seven point eight percent. Expenditures are projected at eleven point seven million, and so far, we only incurred two point seven, just because this does not include bonds payment, which is usually, um, recorded end of the year. So we are projecting to have a surplus of one point three million end of the year. For sanitation, we projected our revenue to be four million. So far, we collected two point eight. Expenditures are projected at three point eight. So far, we incurred one point nine. Then we are projecting to have a surplus of two hundred fifty-eight thousand dollar end of the year. For major H, we are projecting our revenue at one point eight million. So far, we collected eight hundred and eighteen thousand. We are projecting our revenue to, uh, sorry, expenditures to be two million. So far, we incurred five hundred forty-six thousand in expenditures. As you can see, we, uh, we are basically using our savings for this fund, um, because our expenditures are exceeding our revenue. Um, hopefully, we do not incur all these expenditures, and we do, um, end up, um, our year with the surplus rather than, uh, a negative, uh, which we did last year. We did have a surplus of about three hundred thousand dollar. So hopefully, um, things will be same this year as well. If you have any questions, feel free to ask.
Any questions for Laquinda? I have, I, I'm curious, uh, I don't see a line item here for Measure V.
Um, sorry, I did not add that fund, because we do not have that many expenditures as of yet, because all those projects are in initial stages, but I can add that, too.
Yeah, would you please?
Going forward, yes.
Okay, thanks, yeah, 'cause, um, um, I'd like to suggest that we start using some of the money. Like I say, we, we're, we're at almost a half a million dollars.
We are planning to use that. We already have so, a few projects listed under that fund, um, but like I said, uh, work has just initially started, so it hasn't progressed as much.
Yeah, what, what I'm particularly, uh, concerned about are, um, using some of the, uh, alternative, uh, transportation funding, uh, component to, uh, take care of some of those dilapidated and bowing up sidewalks that are around, um, Anderson and, um, Passadorees and that area right there. Um, those are, you know, they, they are a liability waiting to happen, so, um, it would be extremely prudent on our part to see about, um, doing some repair on those sidewalks. Ms. Vera?
When do we receive our next tax payments?
Uh, these are, uh, for the property tax? Uh, May?
May, perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can you also, uh, I don't know if you've gotten it in, uh, as of yet, but also, could you maybe, uh, put together SB one funds that, uh, may be coming in as well?
Uh, that is part of the fund as well.
Yeah, well, I mean...
We've been receiving payments on monthly basis on that, too.
Right, but what I'm asking, though, is can you break it out where it's like a line item for Measure V and SB one funds?
Yes.
Okay, any other questions? Okay.
Verbal report regarding open government update.
Um, as many of, uh, pretty much all of us are aware that, uh, last year, we approved, um, open gov, uh, contract, so we will have a more financial transparency, um, to the public side. So, um, that website has been up and running. Uh, this is the address for it, so anybody can basically go at waterca dot open gov dot com, and it will give you all these, um, reports to look at. So, um, it's been up and running, but of course, there's gonna be some, uh, still areas where we have to recover or, um, modify or make edits. So if you can look at that screen, on the left-hand side, there is saying, uh, views and filters. So under views, you have all the, a long list, basically, seven, eight different views. So if you, you can click on any of them. So if you click on these, um, you will get different information. Um, if you want to only look at the departments, only want to look at, um, expenditures, say, only on the salaries and benefits only, you can filter all that information, um, as you please. Click on the different ones. Just click on any of the, um, list ones, so. So it will, uh, give you options to choose different departments, different funds. Um, if you have any questions, please feel free to, um, contact Finance. Then these reports will be updated on a monthly basis. So once all the monthly entries are, um, booked in our Finance, so then Finance will have to basically upload same information on this website. Um, so it, the budget module, we are not planning to use for external use this year. It, it will be only for internal use, and we are still working on it, but at least, um, please, please, provide your feedback. If, uh, you would like to see something different, some other reports, then, uh, let me know.
Any ca, oh, Mr. Binyard?
Yeah, for internal, you, does that mean the council will be able to pull that up, or are you just talking to department heads and?
Uh, for the budget purpose? No, it's only for the department heads and, uh...
City manager.
Right.
Thank you. Mr. Creighton?
So what the open gov dot com is, uh, Brian Raymond introduced this, requested this item be put, um, on the agenda, and the city paid to join this. It's a way for the citizens, instead of asking and speculating what the, the city, your city government's doing as far as financial-wise, you could go to this website, and as the Finance Department updates, where's all your money going? You can click on these links and see, especially the, the kids are doing the government class, you can see where the majority of the city money's spent, and how it's spent, and be able to track those things, and ask questions after you gain some knowledge on that. Why are we doing this, or why aren't we doing that? So it's, it's a tool for the citizens of Atwater that, um, will educate you guys more, put you on the more of the level playing field with us, so that it's not such an enigma, and you know what's going on with your monies. And I thank Brian Raymond for introducing that to the council, and I support it.
Any other comments? Okay.
Verbal report on new city officials handbook and review of cities' policies, procedures, strategic planning goals, and organizational review.
All right, Mayor, Council. Um, one of the things that we wanted to do, kind of telling off of the last meeting and, and hearing some of the discussion and the desire to, um, maybe implement some processes that would, uh, raise the dialogue better, was I thought it would be appropriate, at least for a discussion item, because I think I had like four or six hours to get the agenda item together to, to make it, was to, um, have a discussion about having a city official's handbook. So, um, you have a series of rules in, in place, uh, right now, I'm gonna go to the next one, um, that govern the way that your meetings are, are, are conducted. Um, and I apologize if we, if, if we're missing something, we're still in the information gathering stage, but we'll have it by the next meeting, depending on what direction you give us today. But, um, uh, you have it in sections, uh, two point zero seven and two point zero eight of your municipal code, uh, and you've also, in two thousand sixteen, I think the mayor for, um, um, identifying that for me, uh, was able to follow up and, and find out that agenda policy, that something adopted in April two thousand sixteen, and you have a code of ethics. So you have essentially three different governing documents, um, that together, uh, comprise how your meetings are due to be con, conducted. Uh, when I did a quick review of them, um, they were, um, pithy, uh, which is a nice way of saying very short, and, and not that attorneys are just into making things long for the sake of being long, but, um, I think that there's left lots of things wanting in terms of a gray area and things that, that should be, um, addressed, so if you can go on to the next one. So, um, so what would be the purpose of adopting, uh, uh, you know, a handbook, other than just maybe putting these three things to, to, together, um, and making it easier for reference? But, uh, what the real job is to do is, is, is to set the decorum and the rules and the guidelines on how things should be, on how meetings should be conducted, not just for the City Council, but for your other, um, uh, city bodies, uh, that function, whether it's the, um, equivalent of the Planning Commission, or these other committees that, that were just appointed today, whatever it is. Um, there's a rule in a handbook that applies evenly to, to, to the meetings. Um, it, it might be, you know, a, a, you know, a planning, you know, president as opposed to the mayor, but, but you get the sense. Um, so in our handbooks, there's really two different components. One, the administrative guidelines, and part two would be the council procedural guidelines, which, again, when you extrapolate, applies to all the meetings with a little bit of just language chains. Um, on the administrative side, what we're really doing is outlining accepted practices and expectations to city officials, and this is one area where I'm happy to say I'm gonna start, I'm gonna steal some stuff from Atwater, which is the fact that the City Council members have to, um, sign a form in order to get something on the agenda, so there's a written record of it when, so that, uh, so that we can have accountability to make sure that it makes it on agenda, is actually done, uh, and done timely, I think is, is a great policy that I plan on implementing in my other, uh, cities and jurisdictions. So there, there are things that you guys do really, really well, and we wanna take those and, take those to other places, and if the people are doing some other things that are good, then we wanna take that from them, and, uh, if it meets your ethics and ethos, then, then bring that to Atwater. Um, the other thing is it provides guidance with regard to council members communicating with city staff and constituents, uh, and how they can speak on behalf. That comes up during election times, whether or not you can use the logo, or what circumstances that you can use the logo, um, and how you're gonna represent yourself in, in the public, and how you need to identify yourself. Uh, it also establishes anti-harassment policies, and that goes not just for the folks that are, who are setting up on this dais, but it also applies to people who are sitting in the audience. You wanna participate in this public meeting, you have a constitutional right, this is a democracy, you have a right to be heard, but there's a level of decorum that can be required of you, and you're gonna be put on notice as to what that level of decorum is, and if you don't follow that, then we can't have you removed, uh, from the meeting and/or take other, uh, legal actions against you, not to deprive you of your, your right, but to make sure that the, that the business of the city can be done in a, uh, in, in a level that, that is well-represented of its constituencies. Um, let's go ahead and go to the next one. The other thing, um, and this kind of really goes to the heart... The other thing, and this kind of really goes to the heart of some of these issues, is have an ethics and civility code. I think you all have an ethics code, but again, I think we can make it a little bit more, more robust. We can demand more of ourselves, whether or not we're appointed or elected or whether or not we're a member of the audience, you know, let's put some of these things in writing and have them be more than just idle words that we live by, have them be codes. And then we have a civility code, the way we treat each other, the way we conduct our meetings, you know, establishing those. And then understanding how that violations of these codes can be punished by admonishment, reprimand, and censure and making sure that those processes are in place so that, so that folks who aren't acting the way that they should, even if they're elected, you know, there's a measure by which to hold them accountable. And we'll go to the next one. And then there's procedural guidelines to codify and expand the city's procedures to public hearings. From what I've seen, you know, things have gone pretty well, but it's the rules governing, we should have these all in one place. You shouldn't have to search in three or four different places to figure out, you know, how the agenda goes and when people can speak and when they can't speak, how long they're allowed to speak. And it also ensures that there's even treatment of folks irrespective of the item that's on the agenda or the feelings of any particular member. Everybody gets treated evenly, has their opportunity to be heard. Go ahead. So this is the first time you all are seeing it. What I'd like and ask the council to do is kind of give me some direction on whether or not these changes are things that interest you or rather we can just keep things the way that they are. That wouldn't be my recommendation, but y'all are the boss, so whatever you want to do, we'll do. And when we bring it back, then we want to bring it back for more discussion and revision to make sure, again, that it represents Atwater. Or do we want to bring it back for action? Again, just a preliminary statement. It is our recommendation that we bring it back. I think that since you just got it tonight, it probably would be best to bring it back as a discussion item unless you think it's necessary to do something sooner. But I think, and then before all the public, we can go over some of the revisions that would be needed or changes to have it make Atwater, be representative of Atwater, as well as have the public be able to talk about changes that they would like. So with that, you know, I think we wanted to start with an introduction and end with action in terms of direction, how to go in the future, all with the idea of kind of raising the dialogue and making this a better place. Happy to answer any questions that you have.
Mr. Vineyard.
In what little bit, I looked at this before the meeting. I think this is fantastic. Whether it be a start, we make, want to make any changes, definitely want to look at it. I think it's something that's long overdue, something that was needed long before any of us were ever up here, just from watching over the years that I've attended council I would like to bring it back for a discussion, definitely, as soon as possible. I think it makes us more professional. I think it gives us something to build on to make us, to up our professionalism, most definitely. So I'm glad it's here to look at and to do.
Mr. Creighton.
I agree with Jim. I think that this is a great start, that we all understand how to play by the rules. We have a rulebook. I like what our attorney said about members of the public, so I want to make sure we have your input and you guys get a chance to look this over because some of you may be councilmen or councilwomen one day. And the young ones in the back of the room, you guys should probably get a copy of this and talk about it in class. But this professionalism that's coming to us is long overdue and I want to echo what Jim said, that this is going to be refreshing. So, thank you very much.
Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
In response to Councilmember Creighton's suggestion that the young people who are here from government classes, I'd like you to know I do have several extra copies if they would like to take them with them.
Great. Thank you very much.
Yep. I can't add anything more than what has already been said here. Taking this and taking a look at it and tweaking it where it might need some and all that, I think is an excellent idea and look forward to further discussion, so. Okay. Any other...
And I'll make a motion that we bring this back as a discussion item for the next council meeting.
And I'll second that.
Possible action, but also that we just, we get enough public input and things are going that we don't have to take action either.
So it's council's desire, we would agendize it for potential action, but with the idea that it would be mostly discussion.
Discussion impossible.
If there's no comments to input, then we can adopt it. If there's a lot of comments, then we can continue.
Absolutely.
Is two, no, is two weeks good enough?
I think for me it is. That'll force us to get the input for the rest of the council.
Good enough. Okay. Any other discussion?
Need a second?
Got it. Cool. Okay. Call for the question.
Creighton.
Yes.
Sorry. I ran out of a table here, so we're taking it here. Raymond.
Yes.
Vineyard.
Yes.
Vera.
Yes.
Price.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next item.
Actually, may I make a comment?
Certainly.
I appreciate what the council is doing here. As many of you know, I have two sons that generally attend the council meetings with us. I have an eleven-year-old and nine-year-old. And I have asked them not to come the last two times because of the behavior on this dais. And I sincerely appreciate the fact that this is being instituted. They wanted to come tonight and I told them, we will wait and see how it goes. And so with this happening and the way things are moving forward, they'll probably be here next go-around. So thank you. Last item is our city council matters, city council comments.
Mr. Raymond.
I have nothing.
Ms. Vera.
Nothing tonight.
Mr. Creighton.
Yes, I want to give a thank you out to the Ninety-third OMS for their complete reconstruction and remodeling of the Veterans Pavilion out at Veterans Park. It's about a $50,000 remodel job that they took on, on their own. They started out with their own money because they needed to use the barbecue and the barbecue had been damaged from vandalism and basic neglect from the city. And it moved inside, there's a stove inside the pavilion kitchen that wasn't working, it was shorted out, found electrical fire, they pulled that stove out and then they discovered other electrical issues. And then Sandy, the recreation person invited me out to take a look at things with them because I'm a veteran also and I know most of these guys. And we pulled some more sheetrock off and then next thing you know, we're redoing the wiring, the plumbing was, we had mold issues in the wall. They gutted this building to studs. They took the floorings out, they took a wall out of the middle of it. They, they're all licensed contractors and they all have electricians, plumbers, framers, you name it, they were all out there. And they spent from Thanksgiving weekend until Sunday working on this for the community. And it's, it's something to behold. You guys should go out there and take a look at it. The complete remodel of the kitchen, they put all new LED lighting, they lit the place up, they've worked with the PD, there's been active patrols out there. The councils adopted an ordinance where we can lock the park up at night so we keep the vagrants out and the drug dealers and all the other stuff that was going on out there. And I've been going out there with them the last several months. And when I first went out there, on a weekly basis, we were picking up needle syringes and human feces and other things, it was disgusting. And over the course of four months, we've been able to eradicate those type of people out there and clean the park up. And now we have what I've seen a transformation in the use of the park where there's children coming back out there, there's young mothers out there, there's handicapped people having lunch at the pavilion now, not being harassed. It's what Atwater's supposed to be. It's a beautiful facility and Public Works, they've busted their rear end, maintained the place, trimming the trees and taking care of the grass and things. It's hats off to the Ninety-third OMS and the veterans. And they go as far as Modesto to Fresno, they came here to Atwater to redo your park because they love Atwater. So we've got something to offer everybody and they come here to help us out. And it was, it was a great celebration we did Sunday to thank the veterans and I'm so proud of that. And I want to tell everybody out there, thank you for what you guys did. And to piggyback on that, the Blico American Legion donated $5,000 once they heard what was going on. And then we had a couple other community members, Jeannie Knight donated $2,000, several of us on the council donated our cash. And it just took off from there. And KYOS got involved and Hoffman Security got involved. And Jeannie, you guys contributed out there, you guys even brought cookies out a couple of times. The, the community pride, it's there. We just need to foster a little bit more and these guys are excited, so that was awesome. But the Blico American Legion's going to have their corned beef and cabbage on St. Patrick's Day, the seventeenth, and not to compete with the Atwater VFW, which is on the same day on Fifth and Broadway. Go to Blico for lunch and then come to the Atwater VFW for dinner. And thank you veterans. And the kids in the back of the room, who's your teacher that sent you guys?
John Bliss.
Who?
John Bliss.
Bliss.
Two teachers or one teacher?
John Bliss.
John Bliss?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, John Bliss, for sending the kids out. They've all stayed the whole entire council meeting. So...
Left. That's all I have here.
And didn't have to wake them up either. Mr. Vineyard.
Chief, I got a couple more areas that I got phone calls on speeding. Of course, it's all over this city. Osborne Terrace, they're coming off of Schaefer and just, they're doing forty, forty-five, fifty in that area. Also Fifth, Sixth, and Seventh near Redwood, especially like seven, eight in the morning cars. But I also got complaints about school buses doing fifty miles an hour down the street. Now, that might be somebody's guess that they're doing that fast, but because they're so large, but going both ways, they said. So if we could just kind of look at those areas, too, I'd greatly appreciate it. Love Atwater's April twenty-eighth. We've got some unique projects. We met last Friday night at the community center. And one of them's the Bellevue School has gotten schoolteachers and students involved. They're putting together a project for determined secretariat area going in there because most of those kids come from that area and they're pretty excited about it. So come out and join us. They've got some other projects throughout the city, but they are really looking forward to going in and cleaning up their own neighborhood and doing things for our own neighborhood. So we need all the help we can get to do that. Also, the rain is coming, as we've said. Nature, you never know. Here we had seventy-six today and it's supposed to be sixty-three tomorrow and sixty by Friday. So be careful out there, drive safely, turn on your lights when it's raining, slow down, especially slow down. Thank you.
Mr. Raymond.
Real quick for the city manager and for the chief, I'd spoken previously with CHP and they were more than willing to talk about assisting us regarding traffic and speed enforcement throughout the city because I know we're so short-staffed still, any help is needed. So just a heads up for you guys.
Cool. I want to also kind of hitchhike on what Mr. Creighton said here about the Veterans Park. You know, I go back to nineteen eighty when, you know, I first came here with the Air Force and retired out of here. And I tell you, to see that place renovated back to where it is, it's, it's a real testament of, you know, the spirit of people and how they come together to make a project happen. And that one definitely made it happen. And I tell you, the celebration this last Sunday, man, did they ever know how to use that barbecue, right? That, there was some killer food out there, let me tell you. Yeah, Lisa knows. Any case, yeah, let's, let's really try and do what we can as a community to make sure that that park is kept the way it should be. It's, yeah, it's, I won't get into the details, but they had a nice welcome mat waiting for them at the barbecue, if you can well imagine when they showed up on Sunday. We don't need that sort of stuff over there, we're, we're better than that for sure. So about six weeks ago, I was asking about painting some lines down the road here. Brian, can you give me an update on that?
We were going to put buttons down. The more we looked at it, the worse the road is to put buttons down. So now we're going to try to get it painted again, but that road is so broke up, there's really nothing to put paint on.
Yeah.
Like we're in the, we're in the process of trying to get some work done on it, but it's on the list. It fell through on what I wanted to do, they said they couldn't. We couldn't put buttons down because there's just nothing, nothing to hear them to. So we're going to try painting it again.
How about on Broadway? You know, when you come off of Wenton Way on Broadway, there's nothing there and it's so portally lit, you know, you just can't, you can't tell where you are in the middle of that section right there. And there's others, you know, around the city there. If you could, you know, if you're out and about, if you see areas where you think that, you know, it might benefit, it'd really be good to see if we could do something there. I'm also concerned, I've noticed at, well, going down Bellevue, going east on Bellevue, as you, actually from Five Corners and continuing east, I'm seeing some pretty good-sized fissures in the middle of the road there starting to develop. And I'm afraid that, you know, if not from rain getting under there and denigrating it from underneath, that it's just out of wear, it's going to just start breaking up worse. Is there any possibility that that can get in places where it can be done tar, hot tar thrown in there or some type of cold patch, anything in there to keep it from getting worse?
Yeah, I'm in the process right now of getting a couple more part-timers. And then when the weather goes away, we'll get the crack fill machine out and start doing some crack filling on the ma, on the major roads.
Yeah, yeah, Bellevue was the one that was, that sticks out, you know, but there's, there's others obviously all around the city, but...
There is a lot.
Yeah, we were acutely aware of that, yeah. Okay, good. I appreciate that. I wanted also, you know, as long as we're talking about, you know, stuff in the community and all this, now is the time also to start thinking about the Fourth of July celebration coming up. Fourth of July, for those that don't know, is not funded by the city. That is done strictly by private donation. So if you have extra money, make a donation to, you know, the Fourth of July Committee so that we can put this on. We've already cut a deal with the folks that are going to provide the fireworks and they are going to do extra this year. So we're getting more for a little bit less, but not for much less. You're looking at almost $30,000 that goes up, about $1,000 a minute every time we, we do those out there. So the concert has not been firmed up yet, but it's going to be hopefully a very good one, you know, as it has been over the last couple of years, you know, have something for everybody. The evening before, we're trying this out for the first time this year on the Third of July over at Ralston Park. When all the vendors come out on the third to get set up for the fourth, we're going to try to make a little kind of a celebration out there. And we're, our theme for this year is salute to the first responders. And so what we're going to kind of call this is, on the third, it'll be the block party for the, for the first responders. And what we're trying to put up out there is all of the, all of the vendors that'll be out there, if they can get set up that night, we're going to provide entertainment, a live band. We've penciled in Flashback. For those that don't know who Flashback are, they're a local group and they are giving us a good price and all of that. And so we're going to provide some music out there. Margaritaville's going to be set up. Dr. Brad Kessler from Uncle Buck's, he's talking about coming out there and having a barbecue type stuff. So if you're a vendor and you're going to be out there, this is your chance to go and get ahead on some sales also out of your vending booth. So we're trying to make it as kind of a celebration before the big celebration type thing. And so in any case, it's, we're going to, we're going to try to make kind of a day and a half event out of this, okay? But it takes money. So if, if you've got money to contribute, the Fourth of July Committee is a great place to go and put it. That's the biggest fiesta of the year out here in Atwater and we really shine on that one. So let's do, do what we can. Any other comments from the council? Afterthoughts? Anything from the audience? Nothing. Staff? Yes, sir?
I don't know. I'm from Atwater Youth Baseball. We were on the agenda. I just don't know what happened about the parade.
It was on the consent calendar and approved.
Okay. I just want to make sure so I can let my teams and parents know so they're not like, hey, what's going on? not like, hey, what's going on?
You're good to go.
All right, thanks.
All right. If there are no other comments or questions or anything, we will stand adjourned. Thank you for watching at home. Thank you for coming tonight, folks, and thank you students for showing up. This meeting is adjourned.